...of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. If you'd just go to the microphone and right there and give us your name and your troop number and what badge you're working on, please.
Um, I'm Cole. Um, I'm working on citizenship in the commu- um, not, sorry, communications.
Thank you, Cole.
I'm Luke. I'm from Shuup thirty-nine, working on the communications merit badge.
Thank you, thank you, Luke. Thanks for being with us. Roko?
Counsel Roy?
Here.
Counsel Sullivan?
Here.
Counsel Sinclair?
Yes.
Counsel Blaze?
Here.
Counsel Benedict?
Here.
Chairman Alquist?
Here.
General public comments. This is a time where we ask anybody from the public if you have anything that's on your mind and we'll give you three minutes. Just step right up to the microphone and state your name and your address and let it rip. Tell us what's on your mind, if you like. We'll have, uh, public comments on each of the issues throughout the night also, so... But if there's anything general you'd like to speak on, just step right up. Yep, sure, go ahead. State your name and address, please.
Hi, uh, Harry White, uh, Running Hill Road. I came to talk about the budgets, the school budget and the town budget. And I wish the town, I wish the school board was here and I wish the superintendent was here, but they're not. The superintendent, is it Antwistle?
That's right.
Uh, they presented a huge increase for this year, somewhere between ten and sixteen percent. Last year, they presented a huge increase and drew a line in the sand. And I think they ended up getting something like six percent, didn't they? And I would ask, are the children this year six percent smarter? Are the children this year one percent smarter? I think they're the same. For the coming year, they want ten to sixteen percent. Will the children be sixteen percent smarter? No, they won't. They will not even be one percent smarter. Because you cannot equate the amount of money spent in a school system with the turn or with the outcome of the children. If you want to change the, how the outcome is and improve the children, you have to improve the teaching staff and the staff that support the teachers. And none of that is being done, that I'm aware of. The school board does not seem to understand its mission, which is to represent the schools, but not be a cheerleader for them. They also have to represent the taxpayers of this town and they're not doing that. We are in very tough economic times. I'm on social security. In the first two years of the Obama administration, I got zero increases per year. In the third year, I got a small increase and it was totally taken by Medicare. In the fourth year, I got a small increase and it was fifty percent taken by Medicare. So, this year, I got like a twenty-five dollar a month increase. And this town council sits here and gives us huge increases every year. And I simply can't afford it and my neighbors can't afford it. Um, Superintendent Antwistle, I do not understand what he's trying to do. This, last year, he drove a line in the sand. This year, he drove a, he drove a stake in the ground. Well, he drove a stake in my wallet is what he drove. And he seems to be into empire building. You know, get the taxpayers to spend a whole lot of money and give him a bigger empire. I would suggest that he audition for a Star Wars sequel movie. Star Wars, I understand, is big in empires. We cannot afford an empire. Moving on to the town, much praise has been heaped on the town manager for bringing in his ma- his budget, something like two percent or a little bit less. I suggest that it should be zero. I suggest the school board, the school budget should be zero increases. That's what we can afford. It should actually be less than that. The town is spending money we don't have. I noticed that the Public Works Department has decreased their budget this year by some tiny amount. But at the same time, they're asking for two plow trucks. Those two plow trucks cost over a third of a million dollars, a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars each. And even worse, they want a pickup truck for thirty-eight thousand five hundred dollars.
Wrap it up, Mr. White, please.
Pardon?
Would you wrap it up, please?
Sure.
With the three minutes left.
I bought a pickup truck several years ago. It was thirty-two thousand dollars. A pickup truck, they should be buying the lowest trim line pickup truck they can afford. That's way too much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else would like to speak? If not, I just want to mention that Counsel Holbrook, uh, had another commitment tonight and could not be here. Uh, next is the minutes. Move approval?
Second.
Comments on the minutes? Any corrections? Sarah's? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? It's a vote. That, that was for both sides, that, yep. Adjustments to the agenda? We have none. Items to be signed, I'll do it throughout the meeting. Uh, first order?
Order number thirteen twenty-seven is a seven PM public hearing and second reading on the proposed amendments to chapter three thirteen, the Town of Scarborough Property Tax Assessment Origin, Section Five, Determination of Eligibility and Amount of Eligibility, and Section Eight, Timing of Payments.
Tom, would you give us a brief?
Yes, basically, this matter came through the Rules and Policies Committee and it essentially is a clarification, um, with regards to the property tax assistance program and really removes any, uh, potential for amounts to be prioritized for eligible, um, taxpayers who apply and are eligible. And so, the maximum refund would be five hundred dollars and it certainly could be less than that. It's, uh, it's pinned directly to the State Circuit Baker Program and, uh, taxpayers' eligibility. But again, this will clarify that, uh, folks, so long as they're eligible, will receive their form out.
Thank you. And this is a public hearing, so I'll open the public hearing. Is there anybody who would like to speak on this matter? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. And what's the, uh, second reading, what's the wishes of the council? Move the r- move it?
Second.
Uh, discussion, comments? Counsel Roy?
Yeah, I, um, I think, uh, we're all aware that there were some residents that did qualify for the program, but because the amount of monies that we had set aside in that budget were insufficient to meet, meet them fully and it meant a small amount, certainly, as you look at dollars, but a large amount to those folks. It might have been thirty dollars or thirty-five or forty-five dollars, but that meant a lot to them. And so, uh, removing the, um, those two caveats from the, uh, from the, uh, policy will allow us to, uh, pay them the maximum amount that they're eligible to receive, which I think is good. And I think we've also, uh, will need to adjust the amount of money in this year's budget so that we do have enough.
I agree. This is a mayor correction and clarification, I guess. Any other comments? If not, all those in favor? Opposed? It's a vote. Next item?
Order number thirteen dash twenty-eight is a seven PM public hearing and second reading on the proposed amendments to chapter three oh-two, the Scarborough Town Council Rules, Policies and Procedures Manual, Section one oh-one point zero, definitions, by adding a new definition for immediate family.
All right, um, go ahead, Jim.
Um, Policy Committee did a lot of research and actually, Tom did the most, uh, to come up with something that's, that's fair and reasonable because looking around, there's three or four or five different meanings of what's immediate family and, and we all agreed to, what came up with was immediate family to mean brothers, sisters, mother-in-law, father-in-law, grandfather, grandmother, grandchild, stepfather, stepmother, stepchildren, or other relative living in the same household as the employee. And that would take into effect, uh, domestic partners. And we felt that that was a fair and reasonable thing to do and it's before the committee now, council, to vote on for exception, to be accepted.
Thank you. And that was in form of a motion?
Yes.
Second?
Public hearing.
Oh, yeah. Excuse me. Is there anybody from the public like to speak on this matter? If you do, step right up. Seeing none? Motion and second, uh, co- any other comments from the council?
I just, this, this definition is in line with our HR department's, uh, definition of, uh, immediate family. So, it's consistent.
Again, this is a clarification.
Mm-hmm.
Correct. All those in favor? Opposed? It's a vote. Next item?
Order number thirteen dash thirty-two is a seven PM public hearing and action on the new request for a liquor license from Susan Bailey doing business at Bailey's Lobster Pound located at Nine Avenue Six.
And this is a new license by Susan Bailey and this is a public hearing, so I'll open up the public hearing. Is there anybody who'd like to speak on this matter? Yep, step right up, your name and address, please.
My name's Susan Bailey Cloud. I live at Five Avenue Six in Pine Point. And we're here, we, um, we've always, well, in recent years, we've sold wine at the Lobster Pound. And we'd like now, we've turned our bait cooler with the blessing of the code enforcement and fire department. We've turned it into a, um, service bar so that people eating on our dock can get a glass of beer and wine. And so, we'd like to change our off-premise license to an on-premise license in order to be able to do that. We think it's in keeping with the neighborhood, um, because the co-op is also serving alcohol on their deck and, uh, of course, the clam bake and Ken's Place and people like that. Um, we haven't ever really had any problems at all with police or anything in our area. And, um, my husband and I live right next door to the Lobster Pound and so, we're definitely part of the community. There's not too much worry of things getting out of control in our area. So, and I believe our neighbors are in support as well. I think you have some letters from them also. So, if you have any questions, that's what I'm here for.
Thank you. Uh, we, we do have four letters of support for the record and we'll add to those into the records.
Okay.
Yep, thank you. Is there anybody else from the public like to speak on this matter? Seeing none, I'll oppose a public hearing. Um, we need a motion?
Yes.
Do we have a motion?
I will move approval of this order.
Second.
Uh, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? It's a vote. Thank you.
Resolution thirteen oh-two is a resolution to establish an ad hoc historic preservation committee.
And this is, uh, Counsel Holbrook's, uh, idea, uh, but unfortunately, she couldn't be here tonight. Uh, Counsel Roy, do you have that resolution in front of you?
I do.
Would you read it, please?
Sure. Resolution thirteen oh-two, and this is in form of a motion, to establish an ad hoc historic preservation advisory committee. It resolved by the Town Council of the Town of Scarborough, Maine, and the Town Council assembled, that whereas the Town Council does hereby recognize the importance of historic preservation within the Town of Scarborough, and whereas the Town Council feels it is imperative to develop an ad hoc historic preservation advisory committee, and whereas it is important to preserve the historic quality of Scarborough for future generations to learn about and enjoy, now therefore be it hereby resolved by the Town Council of the Town of Scarborough and Town Council assembled, that the purpose of establishing an ad hoc historic, ad hoc historic preservation advisory committee is, is to preserve the town's historic footprint. Now therefore be it further resolved by the Town Council of the Town of Scarborough, Maine and Town Council assembled, that the charge for the ad hoc historic preservation committee shall be as follows. One, purpose, the purpose of the committee is to serve as an ad hoc committee to the Town Council regarding historical preservation within the Town of Scarborough and to craft a townwide plan for, for preserving the historic pieces and places that can be used as, as, used as a guide for future reference. Two, duties, the committee shall have the following duties. Review and consider historic planning efforts, prepare a townwide plan, develop recommendations for the Town Council, consider funding sources such as grants and/or private funding to leverage local funds, and provide a report to the council one year from the date of the first meeting. Membership, the committee should be comprised of five members and two alternates as follows. One Town Councillor, one Planning Board Member, one member of the Scarborough Historic Society, and four members of the community. All appointments will be made by the Town Council. Variances and removal, any vari- uh, vac- vacancies, I'm sorry. Any vacancies shall be filled by the Town Council. The Town Council may remove any member of the committee by a vote of majority of its members for misconduct or non-performance of duty. Procedures, four members of the committee shall constitute, constitute a forum, excuse me. The committee shall select one of its members to serve as chair and another member who shall serve as recording clerk and keep the minutes of all proceedings and submit these to the Town Clerk Office for filing. The committee shall set its own meeting schedule, which will be open to the public. Signed and sealed the seventeenth day of April two thousand thirteen, on behalf of the Scarborough Town Council and the Town Manager of Scarborough, Maine, signed by, uh, Ron Alquist Chair and attested by Yot- uh, Tody Jackson.
Wait a second on that. Counsel Sullivan?
Yeah, I'd like to make an amendment to the motion.
Yep.
And it would read, adding the names of, uh, Don Libby, Rodney Lawton, which will be the Historical Society's, uh, member, uh, Susan Oglist, and Sarah Wiley, along with, uh, Jessica Pa- um, Holbrook is the, uh, council liaison.
Do we have a second to that?
Second.
Okay. We'll vote on the, uh, motion?
Amendment.
Amendment first? All those in favor of the amendment? Now, the main motion, any comments, uh, counselor comments on the main motion? Not, this is our project of Counsel Holbrook's, um, and she's been wanting to do this for a while and she sincerely apologized for not being here tonight, but couldn't be, so I think it's a good idea and we all should support this, so. All the comments, all those in favor? Opposed? It's a vote.
Under new business, uh, order number thirteen thirty-three is act on the request of the council chair to appoint Counsel Blaze as the council liaison member of the employee incentive program.
This was, uh, Counsel Blaze's idea, so I'll turn it over to him to explain a little bit what it is. And if you have some, uh, people you want to appoint to that committee, let us know. We can do that tonight. If you'd like, Counsel Blaze.
Um, this is the employee incentive program, uh, that the council passed, uh, about a month and a half ago. Um, it's a program whereby employees can come forward to a committee, uh, present ideas to, uh, save money, uh, improve efficiency, um, and in return, if, uh, if the idea is accepted by the committee, uh, they would get a, uh, uh, some sort of a monetary reward based upon the amount of savings. Um, the, I guess there's only two people remaining to be selected to the committee. I guess the committee is all complete, other than myself and one member from the community and I've, I've identified that person, except he hasn't gotten back to me today, so unfortunately, we can't.
He surprised him tonight.
Yeah. I'm willing to do it.
Yeah. I don't know if it's Tom's idea.
But, uh, that's pretty much it in a nutshell.
And that was in, uh, form of a motion, right?
Right.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Yeah?
Second.
Yes, thank you.
Please.
Uh, any comments? Again, I think it's a worthwhile idea. It's worth pursuing and I thank Counsel Blaze for bringing it to our attention and good luck. Thank you. All those in favor? Opposed? It's a vote.
Uh, number, uh, order number thirteen, uh, thirty-four is act on, act to set the date, time, and location of the school budget validation referendum for Tuesday, May fourteenth, two thousand thirteen. Abboty ballots will be available on Wednesday, April twenty-fourth, two thousand thirteen. Two-
That's what we're doing.
Sorry.
Just for clarification, the order number-
Yeah.
-are different that you're giving, so?
Yes, I, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
So, we're-
Apologies.
But it's still the same item.
Fifteen thirty-five.
Okay. All right.
I'll move that one to the bottom due to-
Okay.
Okay.
And that's pretty self-explanatory. Uh, is there anybody from the public who'd like to speak on this order? Seeing none, what's the pleasure of the council?
Move order, uh, thirteen thirty-four? Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? It's a vote.
Uh, order number thirteen thirty-five is act to, uh, prove and resolve to accept a donation for the fuel assistance program.
Counsel Sullivan?
Yes, just a minute, I'm trying to hold on.
How's that working for you there, then? I think.
It's, I'm just checking.
We do have classes that are ongoing.
Yes, you don't e- you're not even paying attention to what's going on, Ron. Again. I got it. I'm all set now, thanks. Okay. Be it hereby resolved by the Town of Scarborough, Town Council as follows, that the Town of Scarborough gratefully accepts the pledges and donations from the following businesses and/or persons that have been collected to date to be used to the fuel assistance program. Cat Matt Group, Scarborough Bi-Local, Amy Shin, Erica Pinkham, Scarborough High School Cheering, Cheering Club, and Wing Lee Restaurant. And be it further resolved that each business, organization, and/or person be recognized for their generous donations as a token of the town's appreciation. Thank you very much.
That form of a motion?
Yes.
Second.
Thank you.
Again, thank you, uh, everybody for your donations. This is certainly, uh, something that this council, uh, feels very strongly about and, uh, just because it's warmer weather doesn't, uh, mean we should slow down any, so please, um, donate as you can and for this worthy program. Thank you. Any other comments? If not, all those in favor? Opposed? It's a vote. Next item?
My apologies, I inadvertently left one out. Order number thirteen, will it be thirteen thirty-six, is move approval on the request to establish a new property tax assistance reserve account pursuant to the provisions of Title Thirty A, Sections Fifty-eight oh-one and Fifty-eight oh-two, the main revised statute as mentioned and supplemented to date.
Uh, Tom, you want to explain?
Sure. This, uh, resolve, uh, order, excuse me, relates back to order number thirteen twenty-seven you just touched on. It pertains to the property tax assistance, uh, program we have in place and this was, uh, this order creates a special reserve account that in the event, um, monies go unspent in a given budget year, rather than falling back to the general fund, they'll go to a dedicated reserve account and therefore be available in the future should we come, by ourselves, of course, come here. And so, um, I believe this came from the same conversation that the New York State Committee and also Finance Committee and, uh, staff are certainly prepared to put this in place.
Thank you. Anybody from the public who'd like to speak on this matter? Seeing none, what's the pleasure of the council?
Second.
Move the question? Second. Uh, any questions? Comments? If not, all those in favor? Opposed? It's a vote. Unaction items? We have none? Standing in special committee reports? Counsel Roy?
Um, I don't have too many. Um, Finance Committee met, um, Tuesday, uh, we, uh, developed some recommendations and we're waiting for the manager to, uh, give us the refinement of that. Um, and certainly, I've touched, I've, I've reached out to each councillor individually to see if there were any additional, uh, adjustments to the budget that we'd like to make. Um, I would like to ask that the Finance Committee meet, um, next Tuesday, just briefly, so that we can review the, the, um, review the recommendations again, as we did make some adjustments. And so, we know that that's what we want to be recommending to the council when, uh, it comes to the final vote on May first. Um, Scarborough Chamber met this week, I did not attend. Um, Energy Committee is, uh, has moved its meeting from tomorrow to the twenty-third and, um, we're going to be doing, looking at some video productions. Uh, each, each member has been charged with making a video of some maybe low-hanging fruit or some energy, energy-saving project that they've done in their home, uh, which then we hope to be able to use, uh, small clips on the website for the Energy Committee. Um, and Long Range Planning Committee also was supposed to meet Friday and then they changed their meeting date to, uh, May third. We also have another meeting on May eighth, um, with some results from the Sustained Southern Maine Workshop that we attended last week. And I think that's it for committees that I can recall right now.
Thank you. Uh, Counsel Sullivan?
Um, we haven't, uh, the, um, tr- uh, Transportation Committee meets, uh, tomorrow, so I have nothing to report on that and ordinance is on the thirtieth, so I have nothing to report on that.
Okay. Thank you. Counsel Sinclair?
I attended the school board meeting, just about two weeks ago. Closely watching what's happening with them, not much to report. I know they are working hard on refining their budget. Uh, the library meets tomorrow night. Um, I have not attended one of those yet. I'm hoping to be there tomorrow. And that's it for me.
Counsel Blaze?
Uh, the Senior Advisory Committee, uh, met, uh, last week. They have, uh, over one hundred new members since the January mailing requesting additional members, so membership is up above three hundred and fifty. Um, their spending, uh, based upon their budget so far this year is in good shape. Um, they continue to look for additional new members and they're working to get additional local discounts, uh, for the fifty-five plus members. And that's it.
Thank you. Counsel Benedict?
Uh, yes, we've got the Shellfish Commission that had a meeting. Uh, these people take amazing care and put in amazing time down at the waterfront and not just at the pier, uh, the various beaches, et cetera. And, um, they've got something going on with the mud flats and clamming that they had to get to the bottom of and unfortunately, some of the language is not part of what I speak. Um, so there's a little bit of underst- misunderstanding as to where they're going, what they're doing. But basically, they were bringing up about boats being registered, people having stickers, keeping a close eye, having cameras down there. It is going to encompass the entire parking area as well as the boating area and they're paying for it themselves, which they pay a lot of things for. Um, they had cautions for red tide and for people to make sure when they hear of red tide to put the word around because when it comes, it comes fast. Um, they basically, uh, don't have any more meetings. They might have one more, but they sort of go into hiding for the summer because they're very busy with fishing, trying to figure out something to do with lobster and pricing it. I'm sure you all follow it in the newspaper. Um, they're trying to come to some agreement that's between us and Canada and the whole lobster business in, in general. Uh, the other committee is the, I want to get the right words, Council of Rules and Policy Committee. We had a meeting tonight and we basically only had one, one agenda item that we did not finish. That was a policy regarding roadside memorials, um, that we will be getting some input from, uh, Police Chief Molton, as, as he would be our biggest input, uh, between him and Tommy and the town, Tom Hall. Yeah, we want to just have something in general, nothing that is, is harsh at all because we certainly want to be sympathetic and empathetic with the neighborhood of Scarborough. Um, we also discussed ad hoc committees and advisory committees with timelines, um, that people are under the impression sometimes that when they were put onto a committee, that they're a Committee for Life member and that's not always necessary or pertinent. Some ad hoc, ad hoc committees, uh, their tenure is based on when their purpose is fulfilled. Uh, but we're going to just tweak these a little better so there's not so much of a misunderstanding when people are, uh, put onto committees because committees, some committees come and go and they're only in line for a certain period of time, which is what we need. And that's about it, sir. Thank you. Uh, the EcoMaine Board of Directors met and again, lowered the tipping fee for communities which, uh, will have a, put a, give Counsel Roy and the rest of us a happy feeling, you know, have a little extra money, uh, from EcoMaine. There was another, a number of other committees and functions we all attended, but I guess we can talk about those a little bit in our closing comments. Uh, the Town Managers Report-
Uh, the Town Managers Report?
Yes, council item. Um, you might have noticed the pond dredging, uh, here at Memorial Park is underway, started earlier this week, will likely continue early next week. This, uh, drains the pond, uh, working out some of the materials that are silted in over time and will cause some of the problems with algae, uh, and functioning of the pump system, so things are going reasonably well. Um, the material, it'd be a great surprise, uh, is fairly wet and so the dewatering containment area, um, had been built up a bit larger and the material has to stay a bit longer before it's transported ultimately up to the town-owned, um, landfill site on Holmes Road. Uh, just an update on the assessor recruitment, Council, Council Chair Alquist participated in the first round interviews last week. I'm pleased to report that we do have a lead candidate we're continuing to stick with and in fact we've arranged for an opportunity for, uh, Council Alquist and Council Roy to meet, uh, with that person next week and we hope to have a recommendation before the council at your May fifteenth meeting, which, uh, which would be ideal. Um, also in concert with Council Alquist, we're looking to schedule a dedication or ribbon cutting ceremony for the new beach house, uh, bathhouse at Higgins Beach. Um, although the facility's up and running, it's really not being used much at all at this juncture, but we thought it would be appropriate certainly to take time and just celebrate the accomplishment and do it before the official kickoff of summer on Memorial Day. So more material will be coming around, but that's a Friday, May twenty-fourth, and we're thinking late morning around eleven AM. Um, also in terms of housekeeping, I've mentioned in the past, but I'd like to mention it again, we're scheduling a, a May eighth workshop. Um, we'd like to expand that slightly and include the first half hour, uh, will be a staff presentation, um, uh, based on the recommendations from the Transportation Committee. There are three substantial projects that, uh, are in the budget this year and we haven't had the opportunity yet to present kind of the details of that. We'd like to do it. Uh, so our, my suggestion is that we meet at, uh, five thirty or so. We can serve a very light dinner. We'll have some pizzas and drinks here, uh, move through that portion of the agenda and then focus the rest of the time on, uh, this economic development, business friendly approach, which was a goal of council this year. We've got some, I think, interesting things to update you on. And just lastly, uh, as Council Roy mentioned earlier, the Finance Committee, I thought had concluded their work, but apparently we're meeting Tuesday and I'll have to find out particulars to make sure staff can be there. I'm sure we can. But for the rest of us, um, going forward, the critical dates for, related to budget, uh, Monday, the twenty-second of April, the school board will consider their budget in final reading. And then two days later, on April twenty-fourth, there's a joint workshop with the school board focused on the budget. And all of that leads to, um, I guess two weeks from tonight, May first, uh, the budget's back before the council in second and final reading and, and adoption. Uh, so there's certainly some work left to do and, uh, opportunities for the public to be involved and to make their voices heard. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question? Just, I don't have the date down of the meeting with the potential candidates. I didn't, I didn't put it in my phone.
I, I believe it's, uh, either Monday or Tuesday night. Uh, I'll check in my office.
I'm thinking it was Monday, but...
I think you're right.
But I didn't put it in, so.
I'll, I'll see you before you leave.
Yep. Council Roy, Councilor comments?
Oh, it just went away. Um, certainly I, I always start by offering out condolences and there were a number of folks who passed away since our last meeting. Uh, one is a longtime resident of Scarborough, Barbara Sawyer, um, Stephen King, and there were three, uh, three residents at the Veterans Home, Susan Wellesley, Bruno Nolett, and David Hewitt, and a resident at Casa Michael Flahive, um, she's been a resident of Casa for a number of years. And we had a two thousand and five graduate of Scarborough High School, Stephen Foster, who passed away. And then Barbara Cole, the mother of John Cole, who was on our school board. He lost his dad in November and then, um, just lost his mother this past week. So our condolences go out to all of them. Um, I guess just a reminder, the Public Safety Award tonight is April twentieth at five at the high school auditorium, if any councilors are interested in attending that. Um, and the budget process, um, Tom kind of gave you a synopsis of where we are. Um, basically I think we've, we've kind of finished our, finished our work, but we wanted to look at the potential changes. You said you would rework those numbers and I think just really wanted to look at them and make sure that we were accurate with, with what we were proposing and that we've got, um, a majority support of that. There are a number of, uh, adjustments, um, and many to the, to the favor, i.e., uh, increased numbers of dollars that, that, um, can be removed from the budget, a couple hundred thousand, I think, at least, for the municipal side, but I don't, don't quote me on that. Um, my head's been fuzzy and I, I think it's just all these numbers are up there jumping around in, in my head. Um, certainly I hope that as far as the budget process in the school department, uh, they've, they've received a clear message from, from the Finance Committee at least at our meeting, uh, a week ago Thursday, um, of our expectations and hopefully they took that seriously and the budget that they, uh, vote upon on, on Monday night, uh, is reflective of, uh, every effort they can give to reduce that, uh, amount of dollars that increase that our residents, um, would be subjected to. So hopefully everybody does their, does their work and, and gets what they need and, and leaves the wants on the sidewalk.
Thank you. Council Roy, uh, April twenty-ninth is that, uh, evening meeting that we...
It is. It's the twenty-ninth, okay.
Twenty-ninth, we need to have you...
Maybe I have that in my calendar.
Council Sullivan?
I have nothing.
Council St. Clair?
I don't have anything tonight, thank you.
Council Blais?
Nothing.
Jim, you must have something.
Of course I do.
Council Benedict?
Uh, two things, one not related to the other. Uh, I'd like for us to bow ahead in a moment of silence in remembrance of the people in the horrific act that took place in Boston yesterday and that'd make us ever mindful of our surroundings and to pay attention to what's going on, uh, and to take a moment of silence for the people involved. Thank you. Second thing, almost as important, Drug Takeback Day is this Saturday, the twenty-seventh, from ten o'clock till two o'clock at the police station. The way this works is real simple. Take your old medicines that are in pill form, not liquid and not syringes, but in pill form and bring them to the police station, there's no questions asked or whatever, and they get disposed of appropriately. Um, you will find programs in Tody's office, there's a large poster and I got this one last night, and it'll be around town, so if you have whatever medicines you have, you can bring them in. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, and for me, this morning I attended, uh, and Tom and Tody, we attended a swearing in, uh, promotions for, I thi- I think we hired two new paramedics, firefighters, and there was a couple of promotions. Timmy Barker was promoted to sergeant in the police department and Tim has been around for many years and he grew up in Scarborough and grew up with us and it's terrific to see him promoted. His dad, as we all remember, was a sergeant for a very long time and served almost, I don't know, forty years, I guess, um, with the Scarborough Police Department, so it's kind of nice to see the family thing. Family and friends were here today and, um, so it was a, it was a nice ceremony, um, to recognize the duly hired people and the promotions of both police and fire. And it's kind of nice they do it together and it shows that we can do those things together and how close they are as, uh, two agencies and how close they work together. So it was a, it was a really nice experience. Um, again, I want to thank the Boy Scouts for being here tonight and leading, and leading us in a pledge allegiance. That's terrific and I hope you get your badge and, uh, if you have any problems there, just give us a call, you know, we'll try to help you. But, uh, other than that, um, I want to thank the folks on the Budget Committee for work that they have done so far. It's, uh, it's, it's always difficult being on the Budget Committee. We've been on there, I've been on there many times, but it's never easy down to the end. I think everybody's struggling to save a little bit and, uh, other people are trying to expand things and, uh, it's a, it's a really, um, tight rope we walk. And so when we come back to the second reading of the budget, which I think is May first, Council Roy said, May first, then the council should be prepared. We're gonna vote on the budget that night and if you have any amendments, that would be the time to do it. Uh, again, there's gonna be a joint workshop that's gonna come right up. Well, Council Roy, when is that again?
Twenty-fourth.
The twenty-fourth between the school department and the Town Council, if anybody, if, if you folks can attend. So that probably will be helpful. So again, thank, thanks to the, uh, people on the Finance Committee, I know it's difficult, but, uh, we appreciate the work you do. With that, I have nothing else. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Second. All those in favor? Those meeting, thank you.